For public attendance and participation, the meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing but not participation at the leak identified in the agenda. Email comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting were distributed to the city council prior to the meeting. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner.
Here.
Councilmember Pesquale.
Here.
And our city attorney is present. Sir, if you would kindly read the closed session items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one item for closed session this evening. It's Confiscal Liver Negotiators presented to government code section 54957.6. The agency designated representatives are Diana Langley, City Manager, Natalie Springer, Community Resources Director, and Gillen, Community Services Director, Spencer Morrison, Finance Director, Ben Moody, Public Works and Development Services Director, Brian Baker, Police Chief Jesse Alexander, Fire Chief. The employee organizations are Uba City Police Officers, Police Sergeants, Uba City Fire Fighters, Locals 3793, Uba City Fire Managers, First Level Managers, Mid Managers, Police Support Mid Manager, and Public Employee Local Number One, Unrepresented Employees or Confidential Employees, Executive Services Employees. Thank you.
Thank you. That being said, we will adjourn to closed session.
And, Mr. Mayor, I'm assuming there's no one in the chambers, no public comment?
That is correct.
All righty, thank you so much. See you in closed session.
All right, welcome, everybody. Glad to see everybody here, usual faces and whatnot. Let me go ahead and begin this meeting, which is being held in the council chambers, which are open for public attendance and participation. The meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing but not participation at the leak identified in the agenda. Email comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting were distributed to city council prior to the meeting. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner.
Here.
Councilmember Pesquale.
Here.
All right, if everybody could please stand before we have an invocation by Councilmember Kirchner, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Pesquale.
Thank you, Heavenly Father, for the privilege to participate in governing of this community and being a part of this great country. This evening, be with us as we make decisions that will hopefully benefit this community. Amen.
Amen.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. The city attorney can have a report on closed session items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
All right, do we have any requested agenda modifications? CNN, we'll move on to item number one, Quarterly Development Update presented by Ashley Patocznik.
Good evening, Mayor, and city council members. Do this, sorry. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. I'm happy to be here tonight to present to you the quarterly update for the third quarter of 2024. It's crazy to me that we're already at the third quarter, but here we are. I also want to note that these updates are posted online. They are for council, but they're also for the public. So I have a QR code here and at the end of the slide for access, as well as printed material is available in the foyer, if that's what it's called, foyer. So the quarterly update covers several items in the Development Services and Public Works Department. The different divisions are outlined here, and we will walk through, kind of starting at a high-level overview, some kind of macro-level projects, zooming into some micro-level projects. First, just to kind of talk on economic development, a big portion of these updates is in alignment with the UCAN with Uba City initiative, which is to really benefit the business community and to build economic vitality in the community. And the essence, if I were to kind of define economic development in one simple term, it's to increase economic prosperity and quality of life, which is in line with city council's goals. So the first macro project that I want to discuss is the Development 101 Series. At our last Shop Talk, which is a quarterly lunch event hosted by the city to touch base with business owners and developers, we launched this Development 101 Series. And the purpose of this is to explain a semi-complicated process and put it into a very simplified four-step approach. So we have these printed materials that I can get to council. They're also on our website, and we have a, I forgot to click, we have a very detailed presentation on the website of each step. So starting with preliminary review, that's where you're kind of making your plan into the planning entitlement stage. That's when you get your discretionary approval, or you come before the council or the Planning Commission for your project. Building permit stage is where you get approval from the building, chief building official to construct whatever you want to build. And then licensing is where you get your business license and you open. So this is the process in a one, two, three, four, easy steps. There's more to it than that, but my job is to help the community understand this process and help them through the process. The next macro-level item is a new development map. So this is included in the quarterly update, and we'll also be providing printed copies and copies on the city's social media. This highlights commercial development as well as residential development happening currently in Uba City or within the last quarter, and it shows which locations these developments are. So if you hear of different subdivisions or different businesses, it's nice to be able to pinpoint it. So now, we're going to zoom in. So in our building division, there's a lot happening in Harder Marketplace. On the mayor's bus tour last week, we were able to get a behind-the-scenes look at the Dutch Brothers Project, which is scheduled to open in the next couple months. I think November is the plan. And they will be followed by Dutch Brothers and then the ARCO AMPM. Their permits are ready to issue, but they have not issued that permit yet. The housing development, we have projected to double our single-family housing numbers from last year. This graph shows you the last several years, the numbers of single-family houses that were built compared to what we're projecting in white is the projections for this year. So we're already pushing 50 this year, which is more than last year, and it's projected to continue. And that's in part to the several single-family subdivisions that are under construction currently. Another major project coming out of Development Services and specifically Planning is the General Plan Update. This is a refresh update. So the general plan is a framework to guide development in the city. It goes through several elements of how the city development should look, what individual buildings should look like, the zoning, et cetera. And the general plan refresh that is currently in process right now is an update to the 2004 plan, and it will include updates such as including the Boch Stewart Master Plan in the general plan. In planning, there are several entitlements under review. I don't have to go through all of these, but one of the big ones is Dean Ranch, which is proposed to be a senior housing project with housing at different levels of assisted housing. So, you know, variety of assistance provided as well as some mixed-use elements. So think of offices, potentially medical offices right there at the housing area. So it's all walkable for the senior community. Several projects have recently been approved, one of which is the Newcombe South subdivision in the Boch Stewart Master Plan. This is for 234 residential units just north of Stewart Road in the Boch Stewart Master Plan area. And then Johnson Ranch and Butte Vista Estates are next to each other on West Onstop Frontage Road, just north of the drainage basin there. And Johnson Ranch is currently working on site work, and then Butte Vista will follow shortly after. In Public Works, this is the exciting project that we don't really see because it's usually underground, but a big project going on right now is associated with the D.R. Horton Harder North subdivision, and that's extending the wastewater line. So you can see on this map, the section in green is grant-funded, and that will be the section that the city is building. And then the section in yellow is what D.R. Horton, the developer, is responsible for. Public Works is also working on a waterline replacement project on Richland Road, and this will include extension and relocation of the affected services and then stubs for future service connections. Our Code Enforcement Division is hard at work keeping the city looking good, doing cleanup projects, partnering with different, I forgot what SRCC stands for in the heat of the moment, but partnering with different groups to do cleanup, to enforce code requirements, and then the special assessment lien, which city council approved recently, which will be approximately $34,000 in liens. So that kind of wraps up my quarterly update for you. It is available online, like I mentioned, and if anyone has any questions, city council particularly, but community as well, my contact information is on this slide. Please feel free to reach out to me about, if you have questions about what's going on in Uba City, and I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Through the mayor. Ashley, when you attended the Uba Sutter Economic Development Day, what did you take away from that?
That's a great question that I'm not prepared for. I did, I did go to the SEDS Committee, so that's the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Meeting, and it was a great opportunity to talk with people from different organizations, to talk with people who are on the government side and who are not on the government side about things that they'd like to see in the community. What I mostly took away is I mostly was trying to listen because I am, I've only been in Uba City about three and a half years, so at this point, I want to listen to what the community wants and take whatever we can from the comprehensive strategy for two counties and then hopefully build a Uba City-focused strategy.
Great answer. Anybody else? Any member of the public would like comment? Sir, step on up. If you can come up here and state your name and...
Hello, thank you, council. My name is Seth James. I'm wondering why we need to build more public housing if nobody can afford housing as it is?
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else? All right, thank you very much, Ashley. Move on to item number two, Appearance of Interested Citizens. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on actions appearing on the consent calendar or business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on any other items within the scope of the city's jurisdiction, including items not listed on the agenda, will be considered at this time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be allotted five minutes to comment per speaker. Repetitive comments may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. And I know we have one speaker card, Mr. James, step on back up, and if anybody else would like to speak, feel free to queue him behind him.
Hello, I was basically on that card addressing the same comment. What does our city plan on doing with the community when the economy and the political situation in our country and in the world seems to be declining so quickly?
Okay, anybody else care to comment? All right, we'll move on to consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time that council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Do we have any comments from the public on Consent Calendar Items 3 through 7? CNN, we can have a motion.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Moved to approve Consent 3 through 7.
I have a first and second to approve Consent Calendar Items 3 through 7. Oh, if it's a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Thank you very much. On to business item number eight, Community Sponsorship presented by Kristi Morales.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Kristi Morales, and I'm here tonight to go over the community sponsorship request for Saylove. Saylove is a grassroots organization dedicated to enhancing Uba Sutter through community cleanups and beautification projects. They meet with city staff to coordinate their workday activities held on the last Saturday of each month. Some projects that Saylove is working on currently is the San Brandon Park, Uba City Boat Ramp, Cape Mart Building, and then they also have some partnerships with the Sutter County and Uba City Rotary, the Shanghai Holding Pond and Garden Highway, and they also have a Saylove Club that's held at River Valley High School. Saylove is seeking a monetary sponsorship of $5,000 to support its general activities in Uba City, focusing on the October event that is partnership with the City of Uba City on October 26th. The funds will help cover various needs for the event and future efforts. Some of the keys that will be helped sponsored with that $5,000 would be the signature yellow T-shirts, printed materials for outreach, and sustainable cleanup tools, which include the garbage pickers and the recycled buckets that would feature the city's logo. The amended community sponsorship policy allocates a yearly budget of $20,000 for community contributions, and that would be $5,000 quarterly. The current budget right now has $20,000 for community contributions, and quarter two would be for Saylove of $5,000, which would leave the remaining balance of $15,000. The sponsorship would utilize that community contribution account number, which is there. Alternatives would be, one, do not authorize the monetary sponsorship request, two, approve the monetary sponsorship request with changes, or three, provide staff with an alternate direction. Recommendation tonight is to consider the sponsorship request from Saylove, and if approved, adopt a resolution to approve the monetary sponsorship for $5,000. Thank you. Any questions?
Questions from council? Any questions from the public on the item or comments? All right, we'll come back to council for discussion and/or emotion.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Kristi, for presenting this and bringing it forward tonight. Great job by you, and I, before I say anything else, I think Saylove does a lot of good things for our community regionally wide. The question that I really have is getting back to what the intent with these funds were that we straightened out about four or five years ago, I think it was, Mark. And the idea was to help a lot of various organizations in our community and not just be giving to one organization. And I really struggled with tonight for the simple fact that all the good things Saylove does, at our last meeting, we gave them $2,500, I believe, and that's all they asked for. And at that point, that previous slide, if you roll back right there, was shown that we had a different pot of money, and then all of a sudden, here comes an additional request for here another five without real specific of anything that is going to, yeah, we'll tie it to an event coming up next month. But Saylove just had its largest fundraiser of the year, and with what was presented, there wasn't a specific need that is directed to this, more yellow T-shirts. They have a ton of yellow T-shirts. They have a ton of garbage pickers. They've been doing this for a while. So, you know, it's, right now, I can't get behind it for the simple fact of if they wanted $7,500, they should have asked for it two weeks ago, not 25, and then come back and hit us for another five. And then the larger thing that I think the council needs to consider is when we give to organizations, because when we worked the program or worked this policy the first time, we set a limit, and all of a sudden, the money was gone within like a month, the very first round. We said, no, we're going to break it into quarters, and so we did that, and now we're in a different situation where it's like we found there's more money, let's come back real quick. The policy doesn't say that we have to give away every bit of that money every year. We want to give it to the nonprofits. We want them doing good things, but we want a lot of nonprofits doing good things in the community. If we end up with a surplus left at the end of the year with our budget, I can think of a lot of things that can go towards, whether it's Parks and Recs or our youth commission or we got a few roads to fix, you know? We don't have to give the money away just to give the money away. So when we look at this, at the way organizations are coming back, I think we need to evolve our policy as well to where if you get a contribution or a gift from the city to the nonprofits to do things better for the city, that there's a time limit. You can't come back two weeks later and ask for double what you asked for two weeks ago. You got to wait 10 months. But maybe we carve it out and go, hey, if it's really that special, you know, the council or unanimous vote can maybe override it, and we can do it if it's something gee whiz that's going to be great for the city and great for our residents as a whole. But to me, it's just, it doesn't, it doesn't feel right because they just had the biggest fundraiser of the year, they do a lot of great things, but that slide was shown, and two weeks later, here we come back with another ask because they know there's $5,000 for the whole quarter. I, that's my comments, and I think we really need to think about that as a council.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, looking at this when I first saw it on the agenda and I read through it, my first question was, is this is for Uba Sutter, and this is $5,000 that is going to, I see it as being used in a lot of different municipalities in Sutter County, the county itself, and this is enrichment for the City of Uba City. Saylove does a beautiful job. I've been out and worked with it. However, as Councilmember Shaw stated, they did just ask for us to step up to the plate so that they could put on their event to make the money to make this thing run. Most organizations that I've ever dealt with that come to the table for grants or donations, they get cut out of that once they get awarded it for another year, let's say, or maybe two years, whatever the cycle is. I see this as a money grab personally, and I'm not in favor of it.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to be unanimous tonight. This is, when this first popped up, I wrestled with it as well. It's, I don't think anybody can argue that Saylove isn't an incredible organization that really contributes a lot to our community, which it does include Uba City. I had the opportunity about a week and a half ago to attend, it was a community meeting out at Shanghai Bin. And for those of you that weren't aware of it, when the director at the time, Jeff Stevens, was campaigning and he was walking door to door, one of the things that came up out in District Five was the concern that a lot of the roadways, the maintenance district, looks pretty rough out there. And he took it to heart and came to the city and said, you know, maybe we should put on an informational-only, informational community meeting. And I showed up at that about halfway through, and I was amazed at the community turnout for that. And probably one of the most difficult parts of this job is getting information out to our community, and they did a wonderful job. They had a huge turnout, and it was done on their own initiative, really, and the city participated in that. And so I do see, I understand the vice mayor's concerns, and they are valid concerns, and maybe moving forward, maybe we need to structure the contributions and how we make contributions as a council, but I see a lot of benefit to this particular request, and I would be in favor of it.
Me, huh?
If you want.
Sure. Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Kirchner's comments, and I also understand and can appreciate vice mayor's comments. I do think that we're in a process right now, and that process, you know, it's still relatively fresh and probably, to both of your comments, probably does need to be tweaked a bit so that you can't, you know, just keep coming to the, I'm going to use the word trough, but I'm not, I'm not suggesting that Saylove's motive here by any means, because like Councilmember Kirchner, I have personally witnessed the very good work that Saylove does. And while there may not be a complete 100% nexus to this particular request, my sense is if we went back and looked at the opportunities that Saylove has taken to better our community in many ways, this is one for me that I can say there is ROI, okay? And I've sat in this chamber and questioned some of the ROI for some of the stuff this council has approved for. I can point out where Saylove has gone and done things for our community, for our city, our city and our community. So for me, I think that, I think it's time to probably take a look, not probably, let's take a look at how this happens so that the appearance, at least, of a double dip or going to the trough is, you know, if it's righteous, great. And, you know, again, as you mentioned, you know, if the council's in approval, then that's great, too. But I like what Saylove's done, I like what Saylove's doing in our city, and I would hope that they would continue to do so, so I support this.
Well, in short, and respectfully, respectfully, I agree, Saylove has done wonderful things for the community, and one thing you have to look at is look at their purpose, look at their intent. They're beautifying our community, they're beautifying Uba City, they are making things better and cleaner and safer for the community. Yeah, fine, they came for $2,500, we gave it to them. Now they're coming for $5,000. Because we know the MO, because we know the intent, doesn't mean we automatically have to stand in the way of that happening, of their good intent or trying to beautify this community. They are utilizing the process that we have put in place, and why fault them for that or question their motive because of that? We had zero for quarter one, so we still have $15,000 left for the remainder two quarters. I really do not see a problem with providing, you know, contributing to their very worthwhile endeavors to beautify the city. Again, as already been said, because of this, we kind of put a light on the idea, maybe we need to tweak the process a little bit, but the decision that we have to make here tonight, for the reasons I've stated, I am also in favor. So anybody else in the, I'll give one more chance for the public if there's any comment needed? Yes, sir, Tony, come on up.
Tony Curlin, 636 Anna Drive, Uba City. Just a comment, this being the first meeting in this quarter, second quarter, does this mean that anybody else who wants a contribution like this would be denied because the $5,000 is already being spent?
I will have to, someone else answered that specifically. I would think because there is nothing utilized for quarter one, I don't think that's, that amount is dead in the water, or the total would be reflected as 10,000 left, not 15. But, help me out here.
So it would be first come, first served, but we did not have anything for community contributions, so we do have a remaining balance of $15,000, so we would be able to review that application. Did you want to add?
So there would be 5,000 still available, Tony.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
I think Mr. Curlin brings up a good concern, which is if we're going to have a period of time, October to December, then perhaps we should be awarding the money, if you will, in December, which gives everyone a chance, if that, again, this is one of the tweaks, you know, and we can get down the weeds and we can talk about this later, but if the giving period is October through December, then perhaps the requests needed to come in July through September to be, you know, to be awarded for use during that time, or, you know what I'm trying to say?
Ahead of time instead of right at the...
Yeah, or at the end of the period.
Yeah.
That's something I think that we can go forward with.
By the end of the previous period.
Right.
Yeah, that makes sense, too. Any additional... Any additional comments? We can...
And through the mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
That gets back to the essence of, of Tony, what you said and where we started with this, because we don't want to take away, you know, the other opportunities. And that, that was really a burr in our craw in the beginning. You run in the very first meeting, grab it, and there's three months ahead of us. So that's what we really have to, but I, Saylove does a lot of good things. My position has not changed because I, I just don't think it's the right thing to do. And we need to, we need to address our policy first. And my opinion might change if we deal with our policy and delay this to a later date in this quarter. But as of the first day of this quarter, it's a no, we just gave them 25.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir, come on up. Seth James, if I recall?
Correct, that's my name. So I don't understand why you're...
Keep in mind, Mr. James, this is a comment that wouldn't be a question answered thing. If you have a comment, we're happy to hear it.
So you're giving them money without having a prescribed notion of what they're doing? Is that what I'm hearing?
It was described in the presentation, what they're planning on doing.
So for a full year, for four quarters, correct? Is what I'm hearing?
The one quarter.
So where's the other 20,000? Well, I don't understand what I'm seeing here. Please explain to me.
Real quick, I'll answer it for you. The, the quarter one, September, July, if you look at the top there, right above the, right above the top yellow line, quarter one, July through September, we received no requests and nothing was distributed. We have $20,000 budgeted for the year.
Okay.
So by the time, when we get to this quarter, October through December, we have a request for $5,000, which will leave us 15, if awarded tonight, the, there would be $15,000 available for the remainder of the year.
Okay. And then what are the, what's the 10,000 for? Community events? What, I mean, I don't under, like, what?
Okay, yeah, community events would be, like, an event in the community versus contributions would be for, something, like, an event would be like a fundraiser event or some, help me out here. So, yeah, Sutter County Museum had a request, the Alliance for Hispanic Advancement, they had an event, they requested us to help out so they can put on their fundraiser, I believe it was.
So any random...
So an event.
Any random community can come and ask you for money?
Community organization, yes, sir.
Yeah, and...
Nonprofit organization, yes, sir.
All right. I'm just making sure, I just wanted to make sure I'm looking, know what I'm looking at, you know?
And, yeah, in the big picture, when we have a multi-multi-million dollar budget, this is an all-hulk, heck of a lot of money, but it's still a big deal because there's only so much to go around in every nonprofit in town, so they could use all of it. So we really have to manage, we have to manage those asks.
Talk to Israel about that, you know? You know, talk to Ukraine about that.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right. We're good for a motion unless there's more discussion.
The mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution to approve a monetary sponsorship request to Saylove for $5,000.
Second.
All right, have a motion and a second to approve their request. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so did you get that, Sierra?
Yes.
Okay, very good. We'll move on to item number nine. The 2024 Nigar Kurtan Seek Parade update.
Good evening, mayor and council. So for the last couple of meetings, we come before you to give you an update on the planning for the Seek Parade for this year. We did send the Temple President, Mr. Sarb Tiara, a letter a couple of weeks ago outlining some items that were still remaining per our process. I'm happy to report that as of this moment, we have received the traffic control plan, which is a big component of the planning process. That traffic control plan also identified the parking locations, which was another requirement. And then he also sent a copy of the security contract. Once he gets an executed copy, he'll forward that to me, and his insurance company will provide the insurance documents 30 days in advance of the event, so we should receive that next week. And so that's some major hurdles that we've crossed over in terms of the planning for the event, and I'm happy with the cooperation and I'm thankful for the cooperation from the temple, because as, as expressed previously, this is a community event, and we want to see it to be successful and do our part in it, and so the collaboration is appreciated.
All right. I can't add any more than that, because that's exactly what I was going to say. It definitely is appreciated. We're looking forward to this event. Many decades it's been going on, it definitely enriches the community, and we're happy to hear things are moving along in the right direction. And I believe, and in upcoming councils, we'll be able to have an opportunity to recognize Seek Awareness Month as well, so that's good. Sir, you have been otherwise unavailable, so there's probably not much of an update on your end, eh? All right, all right. Well, that is it for the update. Thank you very much, Diana. We'll move on to number 10, future agenda items. Anybody have anything you'd like to add?
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
As we were talking earlier, we need to bring back those policies for the community gifting and stuff and revisit that.
Okay, will do. Do we have, we have that written down? All right. Anything else? Any member of the public wishes to bring up anything? Nope, all right, we'll go on to number 11, reports and communications, city managers' report.
All right, thank you. So we have some upcoming Measure D presentations. We will have October 12th at Regency Park from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. October 14th, the evening, at 5:30 p.m., we will have a presentation with Sheriff Barnes and Chief Baker, specific to law enforcement in the Happy Park Walton area. That will be at Happy Park at 5:30 p.m. Simultaneously, we will have an event at Northridge Park from 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. And then October 16th, we will be at Lloyd Park from 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. And October 17th, we'll be at Hillcrest Park from 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. And then October 19th, we will be at the north end of Western Parkway. And people ask, why the north end of Western Parkway? It's because it's a partial stub of a street that is a gathering place for the community out there. In addition, we have a cleanup day scheduled for October 26th at the old Kmart building site, and that's from 8 a.m. to noon. And we're thankful to our partners in this, Sutter County, for allowing us to use the site, Saylove, and then Recology is our big partner in working on this cleanup day. We're expecting it to be a large crowd. And so Ben Moody, Public Works and Development Services Director, has also been coordinating because there's a food distribution at the same time, so that is coordinated. I don't want anybody to worry about that because it also generates a large crowd. But there's a lot of activities that day, and so just a lot happening in the community over the next few weeks. So thank you.
Definitely is, all right. Back to council reports, Councilmember Boomgarden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, very short. None of my committees really had meetings. I did attend your bus tour, and I will reserve my comments and let you talk about that.
What was your impression?
Very well attended, appreciate the work Ashley and Christie and Diana and Ben and all those who participated in it. And seemed like the, the community members that chose to go along were engaged, at least at the stops up here in District Two.
Very good, good plug there. Councilmember Kirchner?
Thank you, mayor. I'm going to start with our monthly transit meeting, transit meeting. This was, we had the, the next-gen Plan Phase One local service. So what's, what's happening is transit is moving towards more of a micro model in their service and which will, at some future point, I think it's, I believe, 2035, they're going to go all-electric. But before that happens, a lot of these larger buses are going to go away. And a side comment I had with the, the director, and this goes back to the Seek Parade that's coming up. The numbers on the Seek Parade on that one Sunday, I believe they moved 28,000 people between the festival and River Valley School. And in the near future, half of those large buses are going to go away to more smaller scale buses. And so I think both sides need to start thinking about that. But what we talked about at the, at the meeting was, we had a public hearing regarding the recommended changes to the routes. And so we had a large group of folks showing up, and they were very concerned that they were losing their motives to whether it's school, hospitals, whatever. These changes will not be implemented until the 1st of January. And so staff, transit staff was there to answer questions and listen to concerns, but there's going to be a lot of changes, and always change, change is usually pretty scary, and especially if, if somebody doesn't have a mode of transportation. So this was very well attended by the public, and yeah, we're moving forward with that. I think I mentioned earlier that I attended the city and Saylove's event out at Shanghai Bin Park. This was initiated by Saylove and cooperated with the city to address the concerns with the landscaping district and why certain areas in town look nicer than other areas of town. And it was informational only. I believe it was, Diana, was Mr. Wolf, Josh Wolf, thought he did a great job. I think we need to get him a louder mic next time. But no, he did a great job, very well spoken. But again, it was, it was informational only, and my takeaway from this event was, and I don't know how we overcome this, but there is such, unfortunately, there's a real mistrust of government. And this didn't just occur to me. I'm, I'm sitting in the back of this audience, and before a representative from Saylove or even the city had an opportunity to speak, to answer a question, people were already shaking their head no. They weren't, they, they weren't, they weren't buying it. And again, it was informational only, but I thought it was well attended, and hopefully people that attended that got their answers, their questions, excuse me, their questions answered. And I think most of them, and I thought, I thought it was, it was a positive event. I attended the Yes on Proposition 36 event with a couple of my cohorts up here. That is a proposition that hopefully straightens out the mess that Proposition 47 got us into. And lastly, I briefly attended the mayor's bus tour, and that was well attended. Good job, mayor. And that concludes my report.
All right, Councilmember Pasquale.
Thank you, mayor. Attended my, what was it, North State Valley Groundwater over in Willows. We've got a project, this being a water line over on Spythe Avenue that, that directly affects our community from this organization. A lot of, a lot of stuff goes on in the north and the west side of the valley, and doesn't really affect us too much. It's mostly the watershed of the Sacramento River, not much from the Feather or the Yuba. But it is well worth us participating in it. Went to the Yuba Sutter Economic Development Corporation's study session that I asked Ashley about. Found very enlightening, threw out, threw out a few comments that I got a few emails from, so defending my position. But it's interesting, like Ashley had said, the perception of what is economic development and what does it look like. And we got a lot of, lot of good conversations at my table. We had a few public employees there that got a wide-eyed opening of what economic development is. It's just not living on one-time monies from grants. So I attended that, and that was well worth my time. Mayor's Bus Tour, I was the Sam Brandon Park stop, and I was thrown a curveball of, who was Sam Brandon? I know he was a pioneer, but I didn't know what he did, but I thought that was kind of, kind of interesting. He was a merchant for the goldfields and such, and that's where he made his fortune, which most, those people made more money than the gold people. Pig Feed, Yuba City Peace Officers Association on Sunday was very well attended. They do a lot of really good things for the community. It was always good to see all the participation. The main Fairgrounds building was packed. So hopefully, they'll, they distribute a lot of money to organizations throughout the community. And with that, I complete my report.
Very good, thank you. Vice mayor?
Mayor, mine's really short. I have been out of the country since the last meeting up until just about a day and a half ago, but thank you for letting me attend the mayor's bus tour to you and Ashley via video. Did it work?
All right, there we go.
It worked.
I should have said something and really set him up, right? Anyway, that's it.
Great, yeah. All right, so let's see here. I didn't realize I had such a busy last two weeks until I started writing everything down, but I attended the Blue Zones Steering Committee meeting where they presented their annual report. There's a, it's a total of a five-year grant. They're kind of winding down the third year, going into years four and five. They have good plans in place for keeping everybody healthy, living long. Secog meeting was held off-site. We do that about three times a year. This time, it was an off-site meeting in Placerville, so we got a little, a little brief bus tour of Apple Hill. I was going to thank him for coming, too, but he left. Anyway, so got to see that and the economic impact that Apple Hill, agritourism has on their economy up there. So it was pretty nice to see that, and we had one routine action item that night at that tour. The, let's see, bus tour has been mentioned. Once again, I want to thank you two ladies for your obvious, the work you went into, Diana you as well, and everybody else who I'm forgetting. A lot of obvious planning and effort went into planning the stops and the talking points and, and everything else. We got a very good mix of development, new, old amenities, and I've got to talk to a lot, a lot of stuff along the way, and I think it went really well. And we, we've already discussed a few things to make it even better every time, and I think it will be. Of course, maybe I'll just be in the backseat next time instead of talking. But it, but it was, it was great, so thank you very much. And we, I got a lot of good feedback, all good feedback from, from everybody who attended. Let's see, went to, attended an event out at Beal Air Force Base, the POW Missing in Action Remembrance Event that they have out there every year, was well attended by folks. They had a walk, people out there walking the track out of Beal for 24 hours straight as they read the names of every POW, person who's missing in action. And so that was a very poignant event to be there. Attended the city's Fall Festival out of Goshie Aquatic Park, which was, as always, staff did a great job putting things together, the games and the, and the events and the activities for the kids. It was very enjoyable. It was nice, it was pretty warm, but it was, but it was quite nice to be a part of that. Community Service Director Ann Gillen and I, we did my monthly chat at 93Q Radio over in Marysville, which is always a good time, always productive. We had a really good and fun and lively conversation with Fish on the radio. It was very nice to, to, once again, tout the, all the goings-on, particularly fall and the holidays coming up, that are coming up in Yuba City. Did a quick interview with CBS Channel 13, I think it was, basically served to reaffirm, reaffirm our endorsement of Measure D. Just attended a little while ago, the groundbreaking of a, an overdue evidence storage facility at the PD, which is going to be, I'm assuming, state-of-the-art and brand-new way to make sure we have evidence and things stored and maintain the security it's necessary to, in order to get that stuff admitted into court cases. So I'm sure it's going to be really nice to be a part of that, and the PD officers are going to probably be very happy. And that is it, so looking forward to the next couple of weeks. And with that being said, we are stand adjourned. Thank you very much.